Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We're in the Northeast Superior Board of Directors Board of the Board of the Central Department of Commerce and Foreign Affairs. It is Wednesday, February 26, 2020. We're in the library at Bellis Falls Library at Cardrey. We're in the atrium at Bellis Falls Union High School and it is 6:07 PM. We'd like to begin by making introductions, beginning with you, Chris Johnson.
My name's Josh Eberman. I am the Board Recorder.
Rick Holloway, Rockhampton Board.
Jessa Wester from Gratin on the forced merger of Union High School.
I'm Jack Ryer. I'm on the High School Board and chair the Consolidated Board here as an chairman.
Carol Chase, I'm on the Athens School Board.
Lynn Morgan on the Athens School Board.
David Clark, the Union High School Board of Westminster.
Priscilla Lambert, representative from Rocky Hill. So, Lynn Morgan.
Cheryl Charles, supervisory union board and also Westminster representative.
Colin James, Rocky Hill and the Bellis Falls State School Board.
Deborah Wright, Rocky Hill representative on the Bellis Falls Union High School Board.
Chris Branson, Lieutenant of Schools.
Collette Banner, the Bellis Falls Union High School Board of Westminster.
Okay, I'm gonna ask SU Board voting members if they would raise their hands. Okay, we got it. And I also want to check in with the voting members and the non-voting members of the SU Board as to whether they will be able to return because return after the Union High School Board meeting because it's very likely that we're going to meet the recess in favor of the Union High School and then reconvene immediately upon a High School Board annual meeting conclusion. And my best guess is I'll think about 20 to 30 minutes of work through their agenda, but it's an important one, so stick around. Any Board members see an issue with that? SU Board members? Okay. Adjustments to the agenda. I have two, and they are Executive Session, Business Office Personnel, Executive Session, Legal Matters. So, do you have one?
Yes, I would like the Board to consider moving, consider moving 7B to after the Executive Session.
The objections? Okay, done. Superintendent Pratt, any adjustments?
None.
Okay. Communication public topic, do we have any tonight? So, reminder for members of the public, if you find an interesting topic on the agenda, if we are not able to recognize you during the actual discussion into this meeting, we will have item number 10, Questions and Answers. We come back and provide answers to questions. Okay. Review and approve four minutes for January 22nd. January 29th, there's a dissent, we have a motion to read. Jack Ryer has the motion. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Are there any corrections? Okay, I have one. It's official. All right. Josh, it's Wednesday, January 29th, first page, "For a Update on Payroll Matters, Questions and Features." About halfway down that paragraph states, "Mr. Pratt also said he was made aware of the issue with 403 transfers in November." I think that we should tighten that language up a little bit because Superintendent Pratt made abundantly clear at the meeting of January 22nd that he was unaware of the issues about 403B transfers until the morning of the January 22nd. So, I think we just tighten that language up a little bit. Any others? Cheryl.
There is a 27th minute, is a reference to the, thank you, to the reductions in the SU budget? And I believe the number is incorrect, at 62, I think it was much more so. Was it 262 or 65?
That is correct.
Would you like a couple of corrections? Okay. 262 or 65? We exceeded our education. All right, any other corrections? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye. If you would have votes. Okay. Policies. I don't believe you have any policy action tonight. Reports, Superintendent Schools. Chris.
Thank you. So, like past meetings, I want to update on some of the concerns that have been expressed throughout the SU. So, with that, I'm gonna read a little bit about what the past issue was and what I've found since the last time we met to share with the Board. As previously reported, out back in December, the Business Office discovered withholding checks from teachers of municipal overtime, which were deducted from the employees' paychecks every two weeks, only being admitted every three months instead of every two weeks. These were the checks, these were the checks that were found in payroll clerk's desk drawer after dismissal. After further investigation, I found that the state does allow these payments to be submitted either quarterly or every two weeks. The business manager has stated to me that she was unaware that the payroll clerk was making quarterly instead of biologically submissions. But the reason for that update there is just to be clear that the state does give the option of two-week or quarterly. So, since then, so currently, this practice has been changed to every two weeks. The office is now looking to submit payments electronically rather than sending the checks by mail. If checks are to be mailed, they will not be printed until they need to be sent. So, that's an update on a previous matter that we had spoken about. During on, balloon payments are required to be made to employees' 403B accounts around June 24th of each year. However, once again, further investigation has revealed that the June 403B withholding payments wasn't ultimately filed until July 24th instead of within the seven days as required by TDM Ameritrade. Although the balloon payments were submitted for payment electronically, let me state that again, they were submitted for payment electronically. What wasn't completed was the submission of the file that informed Ameritrade how to distribute the funds into the individual accounts. Because this file was submitted late, the file not the funds, the funds could not be distributed on time to the employee breakout so they know where they send the funds. They had been submitted within seven days, there wouldn't have been disruption in this particular case to distributions of employees 403 on time. Another update on the most latest payroll, on February 14th, there had been a report that employees were not paid due to deductions being doubled and taken out for health insurance wise, so I just want to clarify on that. On the payroll on February 14th, there were five employees who had extra health insurance deductions taken out of their paycheck by mistake. As soon as the Business Office was made aware of this, the corrections were made and remedied. All five employees fortunately were direct deposit, so they were able to be corrected as soon as the employer made the Business Office aware of that. So, that's been taken care of. And it wasn't all employees, it was a total of five employees, so the Board has that information. Another update in regards to the 403s, NSU has now fully funded all lost interest in a TDM Ameritrade accounts based on the formula provided by, and the spreadsheet provided by Ameritrade TV. And just to give a further update on that, is that going through that, what we discovered is that the majority with this 403 and the losses, for the most part, all except for either five or eight people, there was a loss, they would have seen a loss. There were about five to eight people out of anyone, everyone who had an issue with the 403Bs that saw some kind of compensation that's needed in regards to that timeframe that was missed because of those funds. So, I just wanted to bring the Board's attention to that there, is that all except between five and eight people, everyone else would have experienced a loss in their 403 investments. That is all I have for now.
Questions from the Board?
I have a question. Do you know why the check was paid on the 14th, it wasn't paid until the 19th?
I'd have to know which check, which month you were talking about.
There was one in the email that we received that said it was not paid until 19.
For that one particular employee?
Yes. Do you know why? Is that something still being investigated?
I'm sure they know, but I...
Is that something you know at this point or is that something that still needs to be investigated?
That was something I personally need to look into to get more answers to that. I'm sure the Business Office has it.
Mr. Ryer. I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that we have a game going on, we're about to go on the other end of the building here, and if you couldn't use the microphones to be able to hear what we're saying, we want to also cheer all the folks that are gonna play tonight, but I just want to make sure we can hear in the interim.
I'm sorry, Jeff, did you repeat that?
That's exactly it. It's very hard to hear because the mics, none of this one's on. After the mics are not on, we can't hear from one end of this podium to the other. I just ask that people speak up and use the mics if we can, that's all.
If we need to, we can take the microphone off the podium, that's on the floor of the room, so we can use that.
Do you have anything else?
The rest of my report can be found on the website. It's the SU Office Report.
David, I think all of those mics that are on the table work, and someone tapped it and used it because I, turning those on, if that works, all of those that are there work, and turning those on is what's giving that feedback.
They just need to speak into the microphone.
Right, so slide the mics aside as people are talking, but turn those on, it's giving you your feedback.
This is manager financial. Okay, no management report tonight. Committees. The only committee which has met is the issue Business Systems Analysis and Audit Committee, and that committee will consider its action after Executive Session. New business for discussion action. Approved loan for 2017 Dodge Grand Caravan.
When we bought the big bus, you approved a loan of $50,500, which was the balance left in the budget. When you approved the loan, or the van purchase, rather than to go over budget, I would like to borrow 17.5, which would make the total loan 68,000, which is what we have in the FY21 budget to pay both of them off rather than go over budget in FY21.
Which budget, Eddie, do you want to pay it from?
FYI21. I would like to get a loan now. I held off on the loan for the big bus so that I'm not asking the bank for two loans. I will ask them for one loan for 68,000 for the van and the bus. We won't go over budget this year, and I've already taken that into account to pay them both off in FY21.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion from the Board to approve a loan for 2017 Dodge Grand Caravan. The $68,000 loan will also pay off the balance with a plus loan, is that correct, Eddie?
Right, so we approved 15,500, I need another 17.5 to make it to the 68.
The motion will be for 68, Eddie?
No, I need 17.5.
The motion will be for 17.5. Can I have a motion, please?
Double.
A second? Can I have a second? Okay, discussion under the motion. Mr. Ryer.
I'm asking for a reminder of exactly why it is we're buying the caravan. Then I'm asking the question, why do we have a caravan?
I can take a little bit of that because I'm actually gonna look at the minutes where we, Chris, do you know what month that was, Eddie? When Stanley came looking for it?
I don't think so. Chris said maybe December?
Was it December?
Can you check the minutes from December?
Well, no, I was going to check the minutes based, because the reason we got the caravan was there's many trips that they take for just one or two kids, some of the public district placements, and they don't need CDRs, so the parents, they don't have to get a lot of money. But I thought when we approved it, Stanley...
Is that a camera or off?
Okay, I'll check, because I thought when we approved it, Stanley had the money because it was money that was going to be used for repairing the house. But I want to check into that, because I thought we had the money already.
Chair recognizes Lynn Morgan.
I have a question, Jeff.
Jack asked Lynn's question. Priscilla.
And I thought we were just getting the smaller one, and he wasn't getting one, because I thought it was just one, is the way I remember it.
Kristen moved to approve, Kristen swore down, moved to approve purchasing the new 2021 Bluebird bus for $91,177 with $50,500 to be borrowed. And that was either August or September. I only took eight of the minutes.
Colin James.
My understanding too was the van was for, there were conferences or whatever, the teachers said that they were going to be, we wouldn't have to reverse them with gas mileage. The other thing is, Eddie, how long is the loan for? Just... Okay, okay, thank you.
My recollection is that he asked for a bus first, the large bus, and then when he took the other bus, there were several meetings where we discussed other things, but the final decision that he was just willing to get the van and did not need to get other buses this year, is the way I remember it. So, I'd really like us to do some research and see if we'll be able to afford additional money.
So, we have minutes here to say, Stanley Budzik, the Director of Transportation, recommends that we purchase a new 77 passenger propane bus. Bluebird has sent an approval for giving us a 2021 bus for the price of a 2020 bus at approximately $91,000. A 36 passenger and a 24 passenger bus are now almost the same price. $166,000 in the current budget with $38,000 remaining after previous loans. A $50,500 loan will be required within trading allowance.
Further discussion under the motion. All right, ready for the motion? All those in favor of pending a loan for $7,8,500 for the purpose of paying off the Bluebird bus and a 2017 Grand Caravan, please say aye. Opposed? Can I have a show of hands, yes? Can I have a show of hands, no? The motion fails. All right. We're going to skip over 7B, which is to act on the recommendation of the issue Business Systems Analysis and Audit Committee. We have no busing committee update. The status of Ed Finance Slotwell will be embedded in the discussion that we're having tonight. We're down to 8C, which is update on Business Office Management Report. Superintendent Pratt.
So, we did have the independent report completed last week. It was posted online on the website on Monday, so the detailed report there that was conducted can be viewed, and so you can take a look at any of the findings. Superintendent, I didn't see any big surprises there, just confirmed a lot of the stuff that myself and the Business Office knew about, but the full report is on the website for anyone in the public who would like to review it.
All right, no questions. Did we have any appointments?
I have none.
All right. Director's comments, why don't you start us off then?
Busy night with the basketball game going on, so we're not the most important thing going on here tonight, and simply people want to hang around before the Bellis Falls Union High School annual meeting.
Colin?
Just exactly what Deb said.
Priscilla?
Oh, I'm sorry, Carol.
I actually don't have any additional comments right now, thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass the coffee stick here to Lynn.
No comment tonight.
None here.
You guys are gonna win.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair.
Go, Terrors, go! I've heard a point of order.
Just a quick question, the number 10, questions and answers, is that gonna be followed after the Executive Session?
You are correct, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, I would like to entertain a motion to go into Executive Session. Who's gonna hit Jessa?
Jessa, can you hear me? I would like to read the minutes regarding the bus from September 25th.
Go ahead, Jessa, Director's Comments.
Oh, answering stuff, I have to... All right, standard recording. We approved, we had approved initially, approved a used bus, but the used bus was sold before we gave it back to them. We will not be acquiring a new bus. Mr. Budzik asked the Board if we could buy a 7-passenger van with the money that was included in the bus so that students can be transported by the driver with their license and background check. And you reported this day that it would be used for the special ed department and would reduce the amount of mileage that the SU needs to pay. Deb Wright moved to optimize the purchase of a van, not cheaply $18,000. And Cheryl Charles asked if we also need a bus. And Stanley Budzik said, "A small bus that we were going to get rid of, who costs $3,500 to repair, but it will last another year." And that's just saying, understanding we've had an evening...
In August, we're planning a big bus. Do you prefer buying a nice big bus or is it not sold?
All right now, ready for a motion going to Executive Session for Business Office Personnel and Legal Matters. Can I have a motion, please? All right, we have a motion in the second, all in favor? Oh, this Board will recess to the fishbowl, as been referred to here at the High School tonight.
Starting with five minutes late. Welcome to 2020, 2020 meeting, the Bellis Falls Union District District. I'll start by reading the morning, I'm on the page over here. The League of Owners in Westminster, Bellis Falls, Union High School, December 27th, and reporting public information, we go with the Bellis Falls Union National Auditorium on February 26, 2020, at 7 o'clock, after the purchases of 28, 5 and 6, okay. The League of Owners, Bellis Falls, Union National Auditorium, have ordered qualifications, registration, and to be related to Article 5 and 6, so they can apply to the chapters 43, 51, and 55 of Title 17, law statute, and mandate. While on this page, I will note that there were some corrections, the single name is the current authority, that was a district, that was a district, Colin James is not a court.
Is Marry, can you actually speak correctly?
No, okay, I thought it was gonna be a little too... Article one is to act on the reports of the officers off Street Two, the whole morning. Article two is to elect by ballot a moderator for a one-year term beginning July first, twenty-twenty. Article three is to elect by ballot a clerk for a one-year term beginning July first, twenty, uh, twenty-twenty. And Article four is to elect by ballot a treasurer for a one-year term beginning July first, twenty-twenty. Article five is already mentioned, voted by Australian ballot. Uh, shall the voters of the Union National District Number Twenty-Seven include the school board to expend seven million, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars, six cents, uh, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, unapproved, will result in education spending of eighteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, eighty-one cents, uh, per, per equalized pupil. Uh, this projected spending per equalized pupil is four point four two percent higher than spending for the current year. Article six is, uh, which is also voted on by Australian ballot, uh, on Tuesday, March third, twenty-twenty. To see if the Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven shall vote to authorize its board and directors to negotiate and enter into a bond not to exceed one million dollars to be paid back over a twenty-year period for the purposes of removal and replacement of the fifty-year-old caved areas of the driveway and parking areas on the school property, include any necessary upgrades to the flow and management of stormwater runoff and any related improvements to the sidewalk and patio areas, and authorize the board to expend said funds. Article seven, shall the Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven apply the sum of forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-eleven dollars from fiscal year nineteen twenty to create a reserve fund to the use for capital improvements at the Bellis Falls Union High School, and authorize the board to ex, expend said, said funds. Article eight shall the Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven vote to pay its district officers compensation in the following amounts: board chair, five hundred and fifty dollars, board members, four hundred and fifty dollars, district treasurer, six hundred dollars, and district clerk, one hundred and twenty dollars. In addition, Mr. Chair is acting on other business that will be properly brought before said due. Uh, article one is to act on the reports of the officers.
I move to accept the reports of the Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven officers from last year.
Seconded by David Clark. There is discussion on the motion. Uh, the motion is to accept the reports, uh, printed, uh, and reporting the officers. All those in favor, seconded by the same note. All those opposed, seconded by the same note. Sounds like the guys have it. You guys do have it. Uh, Article two is to elect by ballot a moderator for a one-year term beginning July first, ten, four. We have a, we have a nomination to moderate. David Clark?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to nominate Don Paton Selly as the moderator of Union High School District for a term of one year.
I'll second that. Colin James, uh, seconded there. And do you have any nominations?
Mr. Moderator, I move that nominations be closed and direct the clerk to pass one ballot for Don Paton Selly as moderator for the, uh, one-year term.
So it's been moved and seconded that, uh, the nomination cease and the, uh, the clerk pass one ballot for, for me, uh, as, as a moderator. All those in favor? All those opposed? Sounds like the guys have it, and I'm on my way to being the next fatigued lady. Article three is to elect by ballot a clerk for a one-year term beginning July first, twenty-twenty. Do we have nominations?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'll make the motion that we appoint, that we nominate, excuse me, Allison Bigwood as clerk of the board for B F U H S District Number Twenty-Seven.
Seconded by Jeff Brigh. Colin James had the nomination. Uh, any other nominations?
Mr. Moderator, I move that nominations be closed and direct the moderator to pass one ballot for Allison Bigwood, Bigwood as clerk of the district.
Seconded by Melvin. Okay, so we moved and seconded that, uh, nominations cease and, uh, the moderator casts one ballot for, um, Allison Bigwood for clerk beginning, uh, for, for a one-year term beginning July first. All those in favor? Opposed? You guys have it. Uh, Article four is to elect by ballot a treasurer for a one-year term beginning July first, twenty-twenty.
Mr. Moderator, uh, I make the motion that we, uh, the, uh, Captain Neak is our treasurer for the, uh, Bellis Falls Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven. Sorry, let me start over. I'll make the motion that we appoint Catherine Neak as the treasurer for district officers for Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven.
Colin James nominates Captain Neak as a treasurer. Now, Mark, who are the votes? Any other nominations for treasurer?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to, uh, to cast one ballot for Captain Neak to be the district treasurer.
We have, we have a motion that nominations cease and the clerk pass one ballot for Captain Neak as treasurer. Mr. Clark seconded there. Um, all those in favor, super like to say aye? All those opposed? You guys have it. We elect Captain Neak. Okay, um, Article five is, is on the, uh, on, on the budget. Who's, uh, who's speaking to us? Is that any Joe? Chris? Chris, Chris wants it.
I know that the Union High School District Number Twenty-Seven applies a sum of forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-one dollars for fiscal year.
Let's say, um, I'll read Article five again. Uh, shall the voters of the Union High School District, uh, Twenty-Seven approve the school board to expend seven million, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-eight, uh, dollars and six cents, uh, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, would result in education spending of eighteen thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars, eighty-one cents, per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is corporate board, uh, and spending for current year. Mr. Hudson?
So, first of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Um, if you haven't gotten one of these, this is your roadmap to the budget. They're there in the back. As is typically the case, the last, you know, ten pages or so contains the budget information. Um, there really isn't anything, um, spectacular, I guess I could say, to talk about with this year's budget process. Um, we did not, uh, our, our student count is anticipated to stay pretty level. Therefore, we haven't added any staff, we haven't reduced staff. Um, if you go to the very end of the, the budget, you'll see that the bottom line of the budget that you see here is seventy-six-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and six cents. And I just want to point out why that is different than the number in the article. The number in the article does not include expenses that we take on for the career center in Springfield. That's voted on by a different article. So when you go to your place of voting, um, on town meeting day, you'll have a high school budget to vote on. Of course, you'll have your local school budget to vote on, but there will also be that R V T C budget to vote on. So that's, uh, probably one of the most important things we need to point out here. It's often times if you're like me, you try to compare numbers, and if they don't match, then you assume that something is wrong. That's not a lot. But also, we've been doing this for years. So if you've been voting here for years, you have had that R V T C budget, that Springfield Career Center budget, to vote on. And that can be found in the budget, but that number is about three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. And if you are looking for that, that's also located at the very last page, uh, about five lines up where it says vocational education. If you take a look at that, you'll find that three-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollar line. In terms of the increases to our budget, um, our budget increases are primarily driven by W N E S U assessments and, uh, expenses that are beyond our control relative to the master agreement with the, um, the, uh, Teachers Association for pay increases and, um, and benefit increases. Um, there are, and as you go through it, you won't see a particular line item jump out at you as significantly increased, except in instances where, and this is where it's a little bit tricky to compare, um, apples to apples. From last year to this year, we've gone through a process of changing our financial accounting system that has also changed the categories of some things. Um, and so I just want to point out any place where it looks like, wow, that was a major increase in that, um, relative to the school building operating budget, um, that is most likely attributed to the re, um, configuration of some odds. But again, the budget itself, um, was quite honestly as level as we could make it with those other areas that were already there for us to take.
Uh, questions on the budget? Uh, Paul? Uh, I'm sorry, I can introduce the, uh, state of the game also.
Yeah, it's Paul Rees. Uh, the one question I have is on the overall budget. How many students are actually, are you responsible for in the?
Last time I looked, which was yesterday, Paul, three or six?
Other questions on the budget? I'm, I'm sorry, maybe it's a little bit.
Uh, perhaps do you, is, do you plan any changes in faculty, any additional faculty, uh, or changes in your program or something?
Um, there are no changes that are going to impact this budget. One of the things that I will tell you, and we, this was handled at another meeting, we had a, a significant donation, um, for money towards financial literacy that might give us the opportunity to add a person to, um, to provide some direct instruction in financial literacy for students. But, so my point here is, if there's an increase in staff, that's what we're looking at, that it would not be impacted by the budget.
Uh, Paul, I do.
Yeah, Paul Rees, one more comment. This school originally was built for seven-hundred-and-twenty students, okay? Maybe it can hold five-hundred now with the standard. So three-hundred-and-six is a low number. I would get on the phone with the State Department and tell the young families to stay in for law so we can start filling our public schools to capacity because it's a shame that we're spending this much money for three-hundred-and-six students.
Any other questions on the budget? Uh, see, none. We want to, uh, discuss it. Article six, see if the Union High School District Twenty-Seven shall vote to authorize its board and directors to negotiate and enter into a bond not to exceed one million dollars to be paid back over a twenty-year period, uh, for the purposes of removal and replacement of the fifty-year-old caved areas of the, the driveway and parking areas on the school property to include any necessary upgrades to the flow and management of stormwater runoff and, and, and any related improvements to sidewalk and patio areas, and authorize the board to expend said funds. Uh, Mr. Principal Hudson?
So again, I'm going to call your attention to this packet and now, and I don't know if we have page numbers here, but there is a section that begins feasibility study summary. Um, and I'm going to ask you to bear with me despite the noise, um, and despite, um, what might take a little bit of time to go into the details on this, but I feel like these details are really important for the taxpayers to understand why we're asking for this money for a facility project here. And I will read through a lot of this, but there are some, some slides that we can do, but, so this is for your information, but you're here, you have this, you can read this yourselves. I want to make sure that the people who are watching at home also have reasonable access to this. So bear with me as I read through this and then we refer to some slides along the way here. This, this is Corey, who is with Stevenson Associates. He's the guy that did the heavy lifting on this, and so he's here to make sure that I know, let me speak on it, I guess. So Corey, thank you for being here. Stevenson Associates was authorized in November of twenty nineteen to complete a feasibility study to establish budgets for paving and stormwater improvements on the Bellis Falls Union High School campus. Repaving all of the asphalt driving surface was the primary focus of the study. However, it was important to consider appropriate stormwater improvements prior to paving. The school has identified failed and underperforming areas of the stormwater infrastructure that should be constructed below paved areas. Consideration was also given to future compliance with the state's three-acre rule for stormwater. Um, as we've all experienced in the last ten, fifteen, maybe twenty years, um, the weather has been significantly more impactful than it was fifty years ago when, when this place was built. And we have been, for the past ten to twenty years, um, dealing in, in somewhat piecemeal ways with that stormwater issue. So as we take on, ideally we're taking on this paving issue, we'll be able to take on a better flow of the stormwater as well. The purpose of this exercise was to develop a general opinion of the performance of the road surfaces based on historical wear. The feasibility study found that the existing asphalt on B F U H S campus is past its expected or usable life and should be replaced. Apart from seasonal pot hole maintenance and some isolated repairs, no major reconstruction of the paved improvements has occurred since the high school was originally constructed in nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy. Stevens, there has been a couple of overlays overall, but in terms of completely reconstructing, we're really working with fifteen, original equipment, you might say, fifty-year-old paved surfaces. Stevenson Associates conducted three site visits, interviewed B F U H S staff familiar with the facilities, identified different failure systems in the existing asphalt, and investigated different approaches for cost-effective improvements to the paved areas. Asphalt cores were sampled on the main access road to measure the in-place pavement section. A schematic design-level opinion of the total project budget in the amount of one-point-six million has been established for paving storm drainage improvements for the entire B F U H S campus, which we believe meets all of the goals identified during the feasibility study. Our budget is based on the full, on full-depth reclamation, F D R, of the asphalt. Based on multiple points, we see this project as a strong candidate for a full-depth reclamation. We consider options for repairing and/or pavement overlay, but these options are infeasible due to the wide and deep cracks existing throughout the campus, which would be expected to present themselves in overlay earrings. Attempts to resurface the existing pavement will lead to early pavement failures. Let me take a break right there because, um, if I were in your place and I heard the one-point-six million dollar and the bond for one million, there would be questions there. Why the difference? We spelled that out, but I didn't want to leave you sitting We spelled that out, but I didn't want to leave you sitting there wondering why that is. We have, um, we, there are six areas that were identified for consideration. Of those six areas, area one, area two, and area three, which are broken out here, and area one is the driveway from Route Five to the blue. Area two is the blue area. Area three is the red area. And that area, when you take the estimates, adds up to a little bit over a million dollars. So, we got all this information, and then we took that information and decided to focus on certain areas. That's why the difference is there. There are some areas, just to break those out. The additional green area in the back, um, that was not established as a priority, but we still wanted that information. The yellow area back there is currently not paved, and that's where the buses parked. And because we were going through the study, we said, tell us what it would take to pave that area. And then a sixth area is not really highlighted here as well, but it's behind the high school, that access road with the, and part of the access road to Hadley Field. So, those were the six total areas. But, as we did our work and recognizing that we need to be prudent with our funds, the decision was to go forward seeking a million dollars and being comfortable that we can get the prioritized areas completed. There's budget numbers here. I'm going to let you look at those. I'm not going to spell those out for you, but I am going to continue on here. Again, I want to recognize, you folks have all this in front of you, those folks don't, and so I want to make sure that, that all this information gets out to all the taxpayers. Stevenson Associates worked with the administration during the establishment of budgeting and understand that a one-million bond, one-million-dollar bond vote will be brought forward at the annual town meeting. In addition to our initial one-point-six-million budget for replacement of all paved areas, we have worked with the administration to create a secondary plan to accomplish all critical work within one-million-dollar budget. Implementing a phased approach for the improvements, a one-million-dollar budget should accommodate the critical areas for improvements on the campus. The BFWHS campus layout consists of several paved areas subject to different uses. This layout creates a logical phased construction plan for the, for the improvements that can take advantage of a competitive bidding process to complete as much of the proposed work under the budget approved. The campus layout and a phased plan also provide flexibility with regard to the school's schedule for completing the improvements during a limited timeframe in the summer. Final engineering design should be completed to establish a competitive bid on alternates for areas of the campus, as well as considering value engineering, both of which will maximize the work completed in the budget. What does that all mean? So, as we went through our planning process for this, um, what we asked Stevenson Associates to do is to give us the most comprehensive assessment of what the cost was going to be. In making that comprehensive assessment, they have included a number of contingencies. Those contingencies drive up the estimated cost. Ultimately though, and it refers to the bidding process here, should the voters approve this million-dollar bond, we would then go out to bid for the project. And we're optimistic that through the competitive bidding process, we will be able to accomplish all that we hope to accomplish and conceivably maybe more. That's where this phased bidding comes in. So, we're going to ask folks to bid on one bid, but break it out so that we know what it's going to cost for part, uh, section one, section two, section three. And then we get to make some good choices about how to move forward with this work that is, that is long overdue. Any questions so far, by the way? I don't want people to either sit on them or even forget them as we continue here. Okay. Schedule. Completing all of the improvements, including, included the one-point-six-million budget is not likely to be feasible in one summer of construction. However, we recommend that if the one-million-dollar bond is approved, to complete the final design and bidding for that budget amount. Completing the critical areas of paving improvements could be constructed within one summer, and the bid documents should address schedule, schedule in a way that is favorable to the pricing and phasing acceptable to the school. The next section, I'm going to just summarize without reading. So, when it talks about the recommended approach, this full-depth reclamation has a lot of merit for both producing a quality product, but also at a low price. In short, a lot of the asphalt that's out there, instead of being taken up and hauled away, will get broken up and put back into the surface. And by doing that, it saves a lot of money. So, that's what full-depth reclamation is. There's, we'll talk about the benefits. The benefits of full-depth, full-depth reclamation process are disposal costs for the old asphalt are greatly reduced or eliminated, the structural capacity of the pavement aggregate is captured and incorporated into the new road, and the earthwork timeline is minimal, which results in cost and schedule savings. It's faster if we do it that way. In general, the limitations exist when the site is not allowed for the pavement section to be raised, not a problem here. There is clear and present subsurface conditions which contribute to pavement failure, again, not a problem here. And there is not enough work to justify mobilizing the equipment necessary for this FDR. The BFWHS campus is a prime candidate for an FDR project approach to restore the campus pavements because all of the benefits are present and for the most part, not a lot of limitations exist. We recommend FDR as the most cost-effective way to approach repaving the BFWHS campus and is proposed in all areas where feasible. Again, that's significant to notice when we go out to bid, that's what we are going to also ask all of the bidders to, to be able to, to accomplish through this. Cory, I'll leave that up there now and, and just ask if anyone has any questions. Yes?
Built into those bids, is there a contingency for the price increase because you're phasing it over a couple of years?
Yes.
Is that part of what they...
Well, the contingencies, yeah, the contingencies aren't really broken out in this document.
So, could it, I mean, it couldn't be, so it wouldn't be any more than one-point-six?
We're not, we're not, we're going to get done what we can for a million dollars. That's the plan. And so, what I had read before is, we fully anticipate that sections one, two, and three could be done in a summer.
So, in other words, like you're going to go out a couple more years, it's still, it could cost you more because you're going to get less done.
That's true.
More, we could get done in the first year.
Right. So, that's going to be our goal, is to get it all, all three of those first sections done in the year with the million dollars on the year.
Dave Lambrou, yeah. I assume that the building will not be accessible when this work is going on?
So, that's a good question. We have talked about that. So, building accessibility can occur if we take what shouldn't be, maybe there'll be a week of this road not being accessible, but if you come through the parking lot at Hadley Field and down, you can still get to the building. So, there is a backup plan. But we aren't going to be doing this while students aren't here anyhow.
Will the building be shut down and resulting safer utilities while this is going on?
That I can't answer yet. We'll know better once we get an officially approved bid, because that would be driven a little bit by the actual company that does the work. So, um, it's hard to say.
No, I agree, like you said, working here eighteen years, that this project needed to be done and actually needed to be done in the nineties, when hot mix was twenty-eight dollars a ton. This figure now, you're going to spend almost eight-hundred-thousand dollars more by putting this off. I would like, I hate special articles. I mean, if it's my own house, I hate when you throw something out. Here we are. I commend the board for the way it has to be done, and I understand now. But in all the next maintenance budgets, please start putting fifty to a hundred thousand dollars aside for these projects. It should have been section by section from the eighties to the nineties. And once we're done with this project, it's going to be all the auditorium chairs are the originals. And one thing I want to say, as a special article, I want the money to be used for the asphalt and not disappear in the general fund, because once again, we spent twenty-thousand on a special article that had backside doors fixed when I was here, and they never got fixed, and that money went somewhere else. So, I don't want to get lined up.
So, Paul, I just want to point out, and I agree with you, Article Seven is for us to set aside some of, some of the, um, the surplus from last year, forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven, into a surplus into a maintenance fund, which already has about seventy-thousand dollars in it. So, um, setting aside money for future projects is a priority for us.
Yes, Sally Wright. I have been working in this district for many, many years, and I hope you do not put section five off for two years. That is a must out back. I hope people go out there and see that mud yard we have, where the buses are parked. And it's not just in the wintertime, it's all year round. We had huge puddles with two feet of water in them. And the, the way our buses are maintained, this is ridiculous. That, have to have those eighteen buses going in and out of that driveway, three, four times a day. So, I think that's a priority.
Right, folks, so, um, whether you're sitting here or whether you're at home, as Paul referenced, you know, this is a project that, um, is, um, whose time has come. Next year will be the fiftieth year of the Bellas Falls Union High School. So, um, for us to get that kind of usable life out of a driveway and a parking lot, we should count our blessings, but as was noted, every year that we put this off, it's just going to cost us more the following year. So, thank you for your support.
Okay, and, uh, sounds like we're ready to go, uh, move on to Article Seven. Shall the Union High School District number twenty-seven apply the sum of forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven dollars from the fiscal year FY nineteen fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Bellas Falls Union High School and authorize the board to expend such funds? I got feeling sort of...
I move that the Union High School District number twenty-seven apply the sum of forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven from the fiscal year FY nineteen fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at the Bellas Falls Union High School and authorize the board to expend such funds.
Do I have a second for Article Seven? Second, Molly, Molly Dan, a second. Discussion on Article Seven?
Yes.
So, I just, I just want folks to, um, to, I want to recognize that, as I've already mentioned, this money is set aside in a reserve fund for maintenance projects. Our, this is my fifteenth year as principal, and in, in all of those years, I would say twelve or thirteen of them, we had surpluses. Our, what has become a standard approach for these surpluses is to give some of the money back to the taxpayers, in other words, offset the tax rate, while also taking some of that and setting it aside in a rainy day fund, you might say. And so, I want to note, that forty-six-thousand dollars is not the entire surplus. About seventy to seventy-five thousand is going back into the budget. So, we try to strike a reasonable balance, typically about one percent of the budget, if we can, and send that back to the taxpayers, but also hold on to this money for, um, for maintenance contingencies.
Did we have further discussion on Article Seven? Questions? Okay, we have seen none. Move on to Article Eight. Shall, oh, I got lost here. Article Seven, we, we decided tonight, shall the Union High School District number twenty-seven apply the sum of forty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven dollars from the fiscal year FY nineteen fund balance to create a reserve fund for capital improvements at the Bellas Falls Union High School and authorize the board to expend such funds? And actually, uh, we, we have a motion that we, we do this. All those in favor? See, I'm saying, uh, all those opposed? The eyes appear to have it. The eyes do have it. That's what we're doing. Article Eight. Shall the Union High School District number twenty-seven vote to pay its district officers compensation in the following amounts? Board chair, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Board members, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. District treasurer, six-hundred dollars, and district clerk, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Colin James?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move to see if the Union, excuse me, Union High School District number twenty-seven will vote to pay its district officers' compensation in the amount of board chair, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, other district officers, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, treasurer, six-hundred dollars, and the clerk per meeting, one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Okay, who has a second?
Second.
Uh, second.
Excuse me, yes, I meant board members. It's great to hear it's district officers.
Okay, so, so it's just we moved in second in the discussion on the article.
Say it, one-hundred-and-twenty-five per meeting?
Yes, because she only does this one meeting a year.
Okay, so she gets that one-hundred-and-twenty-five today.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Any, any other questions to discuss on the article? As we moved in second, and that we do pay a board chair, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, board members, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars, district treasurer, six-hundred, and district Yeah, okay, and, and just to clarify, yeah, well, the, the clerk is, is just, is obligated to this one meeting, uh, everybody, is it purely obligation? All those in favor of, I'm seeing, I'm saying, right? All those opposed? The eyes appear to have it. The eyes do have it. And we have our compensation. Article Ninety is to transact any other business that may be properly brought before a set meeting. I, I'm, I'm so lost.
I just have a couple of pieces of information to share with the, um, with the district. First of all, um, again, whether you're here or at home, I want to speak a little bit to the noise conflict. The annual meeting gets warned, um, probably the middle of basketball season, when the basketball season ends, to a certain degree, the playoff schedule is imposed upon us, and those two, um, events occurred at seven o'clock this evening. We would have had the opportunity to have this yesterday, but we had a girls' home basketball game, the last home game for the seniors, and it was no place to move that. So, we were stuck between a rock and a hard place. I appreciate everyone's tolerance and patience as we work the noise issues along the way, and I hope that when we're done here, we'll go on there and we'll see good stuff on the score. Um, the other thing I would want to note is, and I have to say, it was called to my attention because it kind of has floated with the radar for me, but this year when we graduate our, our seniors, this will be the first class that is graduating under a graduation requirements policy that is based on proficiency-based graduation requirements. I won't go into the details of what exactly that means, and I have to tell you, probably from a parent perspective or community member, it doesn't look a heck of a lot different. But, um, the state of Vermont has moved in that direction, and over the last six years, our staff has...
our staff has done a significant amount of, um, work and heavy lifting to get us from what was a more traditional system to a more progressive system. And I just want to call that to the community's attention and commend, um, all who have been involved in making that a reality. High schools struggled with that transition, and it, and it went smoothly here, as smoothly as it can, thanks in large part to the staff members' hard work on making, um... And the last thing that I want to say, just in case we wrap this up and someone else wasn't going to say this, Stephen Major is moving back with us, um, as a, as a board member. And this is probably the second time I've had to say goodbye to him, and he has been a very reliable and supportive board member. And I just want to thank him here in front of everybody for all of his hard work.
Any other, um, business? Colin James?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to take this opportunity to thank my colleagues on the board. I serve in a lot of other committees as well, and we get along pretty well, uh, you know, on the budget. Um, it's not an easy process to go through, being a part of the budget committee this year, but, you know, we managed to, uh, do the best we can to present to you folks a, uh, appropriate, um, budget for our, uh, community. I also want to thank Principal Hotson and Vice Principal Rodgey for, you know, uh, keeping the school afloat, uh, doing a great job. And, uh, to our superintendent Chris Pratt as well, I just want to thank them, and, thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? So, like, Jeff? Uh, second, second, uh, then, then right, okay? Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Send them, send them. Thank you, everybody.